Hi, everybody. I am reconvening to open session, the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is August 17th, 2023 at 7:04 PM. We have already established that we have a forum. I'd like to request that all members of the public be respectful of everyone at this meeting. If you could please ensure that you have silenced your cell phone and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, first item of business is to approve the minutes of the regular enclosed session meeting of June 21st, 2023. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any corrections, comments, or anything regarding the minutes? No? All right. Well, all in favor of approving the minutes of June 21st, 2023, say aye.
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 Upstaying.
Upstaying.
Any opposed, any? All right, next we have the approval of payments of bills. And I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of bills in the amount of $3,024,718.01.
I'll move.
I'll second.
With the board secretary, please call the roll call votes.
Yes. Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Sargon Guliana?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Sage Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Esther Tumutah?
Yes.
All right. Approved of the payment of bills. Next up, do we have a representative from the PTA that would like to report to the board?
Hi, I don't have much to report. We did discuss with admin about setting up days and times for meetings. We have PTA room parties set up and that's really about it. We're excited to actually fully start. I know parents are excited to have their kids come back and so are the students, so that's about it.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to school activity report. Does anyone from the board or administration have good news they'd like to share with the districts?
Is this on? Okay, perfect. Hi, everyone. Good evening. We've had an awesome summer here. I think looking forward to next week, we're really excited. We have planned a new staff orientation for next Thursday, so we're really excited to be welcoming all of our new staff members who will be joining us. They'll spend a whole half day here with our administrative team along with their mentors that they'll be paired with for our current staff, followed by a luncheon. So we're hoping that was a really successful day and they feel like they're part of the Fairview family. And then next, in two weeks, on the 29th, we'll be hosting, Mike and I will be hosting our new family orientation. So we've invited all of our new families along with our students entering into our NTDSC satellite classrooms and their families to join for our new family orientation and then our new family committee, which you'll hear about in one of our reports later tonight. There'll be representatives here from 11 to 11:30 greeting families for like light refreshments and some snacks. And then families will have an opportunity to connect with one another out on the plaza as well.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Another thing I just wanted to add, and I think our whole administrative team would probably agree. A lot, a lot happens behind the scenes with our staff in the summer. We're so grateful that our school board and veterans were able to provide summer curriculum projects for our teams. And so what that means is typically at the end of a school year, we have teachers that propose projects or we have some committee work that we do in the summer where teachers come back and are able to collaborate and come up with new ideas or work on existing projects that we have. So in the last couple of weeks, for those larger committees, Colleen, myself, and the rest of the admin team have had some staff back in the building to talk about everything from K connectedness to report cards to school-wide expectations. So a lot of projects behind the scenes. So thank you to the staff for being a part of that and we really get excited because that kind of gets our energy going and thinking about all the great things that we're going to do in an upcoming school year. So thank you for approving that and we're excited to see it in action in the next few weeks. So thank you.
I'm just going to add to that. We had 58 teachers participate in summer curriculum projects. So you know, out of a total of about 80 or so, that's a really huge number. And they spent 573 hours on their projects. So it's really significant. The summer is a great time to be able to think about your craft and reflect and improve and innovate. And so we're really happy we can continue to offer this to our staff and that they continue to take advantage of it. You know, they have the opportunity to do anything they want in the summertime and the fact that they choose to continue to think about school and try to continue to improve what they're doing and try new things is really what makes Fairview very special. So thank you for bringing that up, Mike. I appreciate it.
And over the summer, we've been very busily ordering a bunch of the Makerspace products that we're going to have for the kids to be able to test out and use within their classes and even after school in the nest. But I also want to thank the PTA for their very generous donation of multiple cricket machines. And not only just the machines, but all the accessories from t-shirt making presses to mug, you know, presses. So it's a lot of great equipment that we've gotten from the PTA, which is incredible. So thank you to them as well.
But I guess we're saving the most exciting for last time. The district audit was completed. We're, we're annually required to have an independent audit done on our finances. Typically, it's, it's one week in early August and what they do is they come in to renew all of our financial records to ensure that we are in tip-top shape for the upcoming year. There's some delays going on right now. I'm sure you all have seen as homeowners, the delay in Cook County taxes and that's going to delay our tax receipts for this year. So we can't conclude our annual financial report from that auditor until October, November. You'll be hearing more about, you'll be hearing more at that time about the final, excuse me, annual financial report that's finalized. But again, I'd like to thank, it's two of us in the office, but Jude Delashaw does so much hard work in making sure those records are organized throughout the year and that they constantly complement the great job that she does in the business office as far as keeping on top of everything. That they're able to come in and do their job very easily because of that, so.
I'll, I'll just add, Casio and his crew have been amazing. I don't know how we would have managed this move out of classrooms and back into classrooms the way we have. Beyond that, they've done odd jobs around the school that needed doing. We've been doing some painting in different places and making sure that unit ventilator filters are all clean and vacuumed and you know, sort of a lot of other things that they do on top of all of the moving and they, they never complain. They come to work every day with smiles on their faces and it's been a really difficult summer. So I just ask everyone, if you run into Casio or Gerardo or Yoda, please just say thank you, give them a pat on the back because it's been one of the most difficult summers I think they faced in quite some time. So I'm really proud of them and appreciate them very much. So. That's what I've got.
I'll add a little something. So I had a proud moment this week for as a parent and as a board member for Fairview. Lorenzo is doing a spin-out math program at Niles West and over half of the kids are from Fairview that are part of that, that come from the feeder schools. So I thought that was, you know, just so great to hear that, you know, the kids from Fairview are stepping up and, you know, doing ninth grade math as eighth graders and it just made me really proud to be a Falcon Dad. So kudos to the staff and the teachers.
Yeah, we're really grateful for that partnership. Math selections and math courses in high school are really, really important. And so for students who are ready to take on that next step and be able to take a high school math course as an eighth grader, that changes their trajectory. And you know, certainly it's not for everyone and that's okay, but for those who need that and can, you know, take on that challenge, it's, it's fantastic. And so the fact that our high school continues to, you know, embrace that partnership with all of the center districts, Fairview is very well represented in that program and that makes me proud.
All right, next item is our board discussion items. Would the superintendent please introduce the reports to the board?
Sure. This evening, we have Mr. Jack Hayes, once again, from Frederick Quinn Construction here to provide just a very general update. The board had the opportunity to take a fairly in-depth tour this evening of the construction site. And so we were able to cover a lot of questions there. But just more so for the general public and, you know, certainly board members, if since we walked around together, if you've thought of anything else, now's, you know, a great opportunity to ask those questions. So I know Jack had prepared kind of a summary of where things are at, so.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, as, as you witnessed and as you can see from being in the neighborhood, there's a lot of activity going on. And so we are at a point right now where we have prioritized turning over classroom spaces. So the South Edition, which we call the C Wing, the one-story addition, which are the kindergarten classrooms. We're going to be bringing furniture into next week and getting those ready for turnover, turnover to teachers the week of the 28th. And the two-story classroom on the east side, we are still in the process of doing some final installation of mechanical systems and getting up ceilings and caseworks so we can get flooring in and get the connecting links both to the north two-story existing building and the existing building one story to the west connected so that we can get up and running. So we're going to be working diligently on that over the next couple of weeks so that the week of the 28th, we can start phasing in the access for teachers into those classrooms and getting those set up for start of school on the 5th. So that's, that's kind of a quick overview. If there's any specific questions or something you think I'd, we'd like more information on? No? One area, because of some of the things that we did encounter in the project going back to last fall, such as the concrete shortage and the quarry strike. So an area like the library is going to come online a little bit later into, into September and a couple of the team teaching rooms. So there are a couple of spaces like that that we're using as kind of our contingency plan.
The exterior of the site is coming along. We didn't spend too much time walking around the outside. So I don't know if you would just quickly touch upon how that's going to progress because I think that's going to happen fairly quickly now too.
Right. So we finished the, the concrete curb for the parking lot, the perimeter. We're going to be finishing the islands tomorrow. And so the paver will be here next week putting in the asphalt paving for the parking lot and getting it striped ready for teachers on the 28th. The track is, the new track is in, the asphalt is in. The surface coat, which are the lines and, and surface coating will be installed the week of the 28th. The light poles will be going up the next, the end of next week and our landscaper is supposed to be here any day to start dressing up the perimeter of the site.
So we're hoping for a lot of things to be happening in the next two weeks and there will be a lot. You know, there's just so many things happening at one time here, inside, outside. You know, so many things have just happened that none of us could have planned for. So it's been, you know, quite a challenge at times, but you know, I'm feeling very positive about, you know, welcoming our kids back on September 5th and having new spaces that they're going to really enjoy being in and hopefully having a, a grand opening. I'm not, I'm not confident enough to set that date yet, but you know, hopefully we're looking at sometime late October, early November that we can have a wonderful celebration of, you know, all of the hard work and all the great spaces, the investment in this community. So we knew it was a very aggressive project going into this. And so any of the bumps in the road, you know, we knew we're going to have a rough effect on us, but, but we're in, we're in good shape. And like I said, you know, we're proceeding with all the typical activities we plan. The PTA 5K, we're looking forward to sometime this fall. You know, teacher orientation, new family welcoming, you know, all those things that we would normally do, we're, we're carrying on with. So you know, feeling really good about that start of the school year. So. Any other questions for Jack while he's here with us? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, the administrative team has put together a, an update for the board on the strategic plan. It'll be up on the big screen, but it should also be able to, you should be able to click a tab on your device so that you can look at your device rather than having to turn around to see the screen. So if you need help, just raise your hand and Patrick will come over and make sure that you can see the presentation on your Chromebook. So I'm just going to jump right in here on the, Patrick, are you going to move the slides? Okay, if you could go to slide two, that would be great. We always like to remember our mission and vision. That's what grounds us in everything that we do here at Fairview. I take pride in the fact that the strategic plan is not in a binder sitting on a shelf, but it's really a living, breathing thing that we talk about often. And we really strive towards working to complete all the various initiatives and projects within it. This plan was the plan developed by close to 100 community members, including Fairview alumni, current Fairview students, board members, community members that don't have kids in the school. So it was really an important project for us at its, you know, at the beginning in 2019. So we've really tried to hold ourselves to a high standard and trying to work through all of this. On slide three, the belief statements. Again, something that we talk about frequently here at Fairview. We talk with our teachers about. I'm not going to read them to you, but I think it's a good reminder of why we're here and what we're doing. Our equity statement, this was something that has been added to the strategic plan since the development in 2019, but also a very important piece of all of what we do here along with our mission and vision. The next slide. This is an overview of the goals that were established by the committee back in 2019. So we had a goal related to community connections and relations. Goal two, related to curriculum and instruction. Goal three, diversity and inclusivity. Goal four, fiscal stewardship. Goal five, social emotional learning and goal six, student support services. On the next slide, we are talking about the next steps. We have really, I'm, I'm very proud of the work we've done considering this plan was established and then we faced COVID and having to go to a whole different style of, of teaching and learning. So we've made tremendous progress, but last year at this time, I requested that the board consider extending the plan. And that's what we agreed to. So this 23, 24 school year will be the final year of this strategic plan. We believe that that allows us the time to complete all of the objectives in a way that is really well done and, and not rushed and not leaving anything sort of left untouched. I am recommending that the board consider another strategic planning process in the fall or the winter of 2024. I would encourage a process similar to the one we took on back in 2019 because it was really a, a really great process and I think we had a really good outcome. So I would encourage the board to consider that. And that's something we can talk about, you know, as we move through this school year and start planning for next year. Okay. So on our first goal, I've asked Colleen and Mike to address a couple of the objectives here and what we've completed and kind of what we're, we're looking forward to this coming school year. So thank you for jumping in here. Go ahead.
Absolutely. So you heard us mention summer curriculum and this past summer, the K connectedness group met in hopes of expanding our activities as indicated here on the strategic plan. Last school year, you heard us report that we did three gatherings and the team felt like we really needed to add a fourth to bring to life this idea of connectedness. In addition to allowing time to incorporate activities for community service and being able to provide outreach within the Niles Township community, but then also outside of the Niles Township community as well. So this year, the, like I said, the group met, we've identified dates, we've identified what projects we will be doing and the team will be launching this with our staff in one of our initial first weeks of school and we will be pairing similarly, if you remember last year, middle school advisories with primary homerooms. We felt like that was the best way to gain those connections and then staff members. Another focus of this is going to be staff connectedness as well. You've heard us, we're adding new staff members, our, our faculty is growing, our spaces are growing. So this is a huge initiative for this school year.
And just to piggyback on some of the things that Colleen said as well. In throughout the entire building, the K connectedness is really that mindset of one Fairview, but that branches out to the community as well. So anytime we have opportunities to come up with events where we have all stakeholders coming to school and celebrating or doing an activity together. I know last year we did some of that with Technology Night. We do a pack the place game where we invite everyone in the community and donate items to, you know, food pantry. So those types of things on the strategic plan, I think we're very mindful of, of leaving that in progress and kind of putting an X in those squares because we know that that's ongoing and always shifting and changing depending upon what happens from year to year. So we like to leave that available for us to, to add new ideas. So in middle school this upcoming year, just to highlight a little bit of, of this and it kind of will circle back. And I believe in goal five is opportunities for students with community service and partners, partnerships with our wonderful parent, parent and guardian community. So in our electives, one specifically, one of our staff members is going to be looking at those connections and bringing some people into the building that have fascinating careers or things that students can start exploring as they prepare in middle school and obviously for then high school as well. The community service piece last year in our life skills program, our teacher utilized that class to have students try to log community service hours. Not always easy for some families just because very busy schedules, but then we try to allow students to capture those in the building as well. So there might be students that are looking for hours within the school to give back and that might be helping a kindergarten teacher. Maybe, you know, stock their shelves with books or be able to read the younger children or to help in the lunchroom, help Casio and the guys around the building. So that, that's where we're going with some of the service and community, the community work that we're doing that will continue this year and then obviously beyond, hopefully with the next strategic plan. So I will pass it along. Oh, we're, we're two as well. I'll switch with Colleen.
I think we didn't finish one though. Need to go back. Okay, perfect. So for one C for the parent mentor program. If, just as a reminder, the parent mentor program is a wonderful opportunity for parents who did not grow up here in America and have the opportunity to go to school in America. So it's very difficult for them sometimes to understand what it's like for their child's experience here in Skokie. So what this program does is provide an opportunity for the parents to come into the building. It's run, going to be run through this year, the parent, EL Parent Center. And we send out all the communications. You'll see it coming out in an upcoming digital backpack looking for parents. It's a very thorough program where they're provided education opportunities through the EL Parent Center. And then our teachers offer to host parents in their classrooms. We do advise parents that they, to be partnered with a classroom teacher that is not of their own child. We feel like that's in the best interest of the child and the parent. But we have heard such great feedback from these parents that have had the opportunity to be in our school to say, oh my gosh, this is so different than how I grew up or my experience. And it creates, sometimes there's a border between, you know, administrators and teachers and parents. And when they can come into our classrooms, they feel so much more comfortable approaching their child's teacher, knowing how to ask certain questions. So this is a program that since I have come, this is the beginning of my fifth year that I've helped to shore up for our administrative team. And this year, we're hoping to create the survey to be able to survey our Fairview parents to really get feedback on what their experience is like. We've had many anecdotal conversations. We've had them come to board meetings in the past and talk about their experience and and we know it's been great, but we'd like to really get some more data on their feedback for their experience for the program. I'll also talk about one D, our new family committee. So our new family committee was started also five years ago out of the strategic plan. And we also just met last week as a committee. You heard they are going to be involved in welcoming all of our new families. They also have put three dates on the calendar, one of which will be happening in two weeks on the 29th. And they're looking forward to around a November evening event, bringing new families into the building to connect and then a spring event as well.
Sorry, I combined both of mine before. That's why I was so quick to, to move. So just going on and following along with what Colleen is going in, one E is speaking a little bit to the opportunities for students to be able to explore some of those partnerships outside the walls of Fairview, which is, you know, something that we, we have a lot of different, a lot of different businesses and individuals within our own community that are willing to come in and share those experiences with students. So we hope to continue to do that as well. And then the last one, creating a questionnaire to help with parent volunteers. I know in our elective programming this year in middle school, that is going to be one of the electives is trying to locate individuals that would be willing to share those experiences. So we will be doing that this fall. And then for goal two, curriculum and instruction for objective two A and, and two B, at least to the start. We're really excited that we're able to say that those are completed. This summer, I was speaking to some of the summer curriculum work that we did. We launched our, our report card committee. So we're looking to really dive deep and find new opportunities within our report cards, not only just K four to five eight, but figuring out ways that we can do that across the whole school. So this summer, we did some curriculum work with a select group of teachers and we're going to be doing that work this school year as well with some of our professional development time as well this, this school year. So we're really excited for that.
I think that pretty much covers all of goal one and two for us.
Moving on to slide three. Ms. Kilpatrick, are you coming on up? Goal three, please. This is our diversity and inclusivity slide. Go, I know it's a lot of shuffling here. I feel tall. Thank you.
Okay, so you guys can see objective three A for celebrating Fairview's diverse faculty and staff, which we have been doing that kind of consistently ongoing. Of course, it says complete for 2019 to 2020. We have continued that on up until this date. Engage in Skokie's Coming Together Program. That's something that we've also completed. If you take a look at objective three B, recruit and hire the most qualified educators. So over the last year, what we have done is gone through our recruitment and hiring manual. So we took a look at the one that we had before, made some significant changes to just kind of verbiage, really making sure that we looked at it through an equity lens. So Dr. Whitaker and myself sat down on a few different occasions and kind of went through it. And then we kind of brought it to the rest of the administration team. And so I'm very happy to report that that is complete. We've actually kind of put that into practice as we've hired new staff over this last, over the summer, you know, to prepare for this school year. Which is why it indicates complete there. And then with that, we would continue to use that in perspective when we get ready to start to develop a leadership training for ongoing hiring going forth. So. That is in progress. And then objective three C, staff development, diversity, culture and sensitivity to bias. Over the last school year, we did have staff training and education by Dr. Yvette Dubiel. I'm also happy to say that that will continue into this school year as well as she has so graciously agreed to continue on with us. So our staff will continue to be trained and educated on equity-driven topics in that manner. And we'll use some of her guidance and expertise as well in our ongoing research for affinity space development, which is something that we continue to talk about and figure out how that fits best here at Fairview with our staff population and our students as well. And then for objective three D, highlight diversity within curriculum, include diversity requirements in our program review cycles. So over the course of the last year, we have gone over some new math curriculum, which we will be piloting this fall, starting for this 23, 24 school year. So that is a way that we've decided to implement more equity, you know, driven curriculum so that takes place. Going forth, we're going to be looking at some English and ELA curriculum that it will happen in, in the next couple of years, but that's next on our things to do in terms of curriculum where equity is concerned. So we are well on our way.
Thank you for joining us and sharing all of that. Fantastic. Goal number four, Mr. Fair, fiscal stewardship.
Okay, we had four main objectives here with the top.
Okay, we had four main objectives here with the topics related to fiscal stewardship. The first i- is a difficult one, but it's continued, it's ongoing. It's enrollment projections based off our tenure district data. We've been changing this year in, year out. Due to the district's small population, the volatility from year to year is very inconsistent. So we'll have a one big class, one year, one small class, one year. And the me- metrics that we use to project that are very difficult to pinpoint. So it makes it, it makes it hard, but we know from year to year, we have very few people moving in, moving out that are from going from first to second to third to fourth. It's really the incoming kindergartners that we're trying to find a good way to project that out. Classroom space assessment to ensure proper utilization. We've done that prior to the construction project and then we'll do that again after the construction project is concluded. That's going to be part of our long-term facility assessment. With our architects. Objective four B was talking about when, when we first started this plan. There was a lot more going on at the state and federal level with regard to funding and in school districts and potentially rem, uh, changes to TRS in the retirement plan. And potentially changes to insurance plans and things along those lines. It's been pretty consistent for the last few years, but we do want to continue to. Put projection scenarios together that are consistent with any new legislation that is coming down. And we'll be sure to notify the board of any, anything along those lines. Creating a district fund balance policy was a big one when we started this back into 2019. We didn't have a fund balance policy. So a fund balance policy is something that's set at the board level to ensure that the district is, is being fiscally responsible. Uh, we had always had upwards of a hundred percent of our fund balance. We talked about at the time that if we were to, and, and Dr. Whittaker was around for the referendum back in 2000 and. We had promised taxpayers, I guess, at that time that it would be a long time before we went out for referendum again. So with this building project coming up, we wanted to find a way. That we would spend our fund balance down to a point that we would get to, it really is, is be recommends 40 to 50%. A lot of school districts set their language that way as well. We set it at 75%. Because we didn't have language before, let's set it something and aim that as the goal. There's a couple of other metrics that the state uses to measure fund balance. So there's a state financial report card. One of the metrics they use is days cash on hand. The highest score you can get is 180 days cash on hand, which would then equate to about 50% fund balance. And that's, that, that would be one measure. The other measure would be revenues to fund balance ratio. And the revenues to fund balance ratio is about 25%. So we're well above that. So. Right now in the projections, and we'll talk about this intended budget later, is we're at about 63% projected after this fiscal year, and that's after construction costs. Everything there. So we're right in the area we want to be with regards to fund balance. And now we go about the ways of building that back up. Four C, uh, it'd be exploring methods to maintain reasonable district insurance costs. And this is something I want to, I'm very, I'm very proud of, the teachers should be proud of, but we've had been very productive meetings over the last 10, 11 years. We've had this insurance committee in place. We've talked about plans, trying to curb costs for teachers, trying to curb costs for the board and also implement wellness policies and wellness plans. That will really kind of curb those long-term costs that we may have as a district. So that's been really active and ongoing over the last five years and enhancing those wellness offerings that we've had, you know, it's, it's. It's hard for teachers enough to, to keep on with everything going in the classrooms, but a lot of the teachers really have participated in this wellness program a great deal. Have taken time out of their to, to plan activities, to try and coordinate fitness sessions. You know, we have coffee deliveries going on. It's, it's really great. And that's because the teachers have bought in and we have really participated a lot. That final objective is looking at the district facilities and the security plan. Again, like I mentioned, right after this construction project is done, we're going to take a long-term facility, I'll look with our architects at what we want to do the next five to 10 years. After this project and that'll go, that'll look at, I know Casio's gotten his radar already. He actually stopped by my office today when we were talking about the budget. He's. Said, well, hey, Jeff roofing. We got boilers, but he's always constantly thinking about what's next, what's next, what's next, which is good because then we'll sit down and project out. But we're going to get together with our architects and talk a little bit more about what's next with regards to finances and facilities after the project's over.
Thank you. Good job. The next slide is the social emotional learning goal five. The principals coming back to the.
Yes, we are. So for five A was continue to develop and expand school-wide SCL programming. And really quickly, when we established the strategic plan, we started looking at programming for the entire school. Then COVID happened. So in the works of that was starting our advisory program in middle school and then in the classrooms in K four. They're already doing this with a lot of their morning meeting time. And then. As COVID was starting to wind down and we were able to be back in the building, we adopted the second step program. Pretty quickly at that school year, and we started utilizing it as much as we, as much as we could, because it was really important with students being back in the building, especially coming off of the pandemic. And then in five B, implement an advisory system at Fairview that has happened. So we're really excited for the work. That we're continuing to do with that each summer, as I mentioned before, we have committees that meet and every summer. Representatives in middle school do meet to discuss some changes, things that we can look at for the, the following school year. As I mentioned earlier, providing opportunities for ongoing community service and volunteer work specifically with students and social connections. So we are doing that as well. Five, objective five C, and I know Colleen can chime in a little bit on this too as well, is just looking at different options for extracurriculars with. Students, we have staff that are always willing to offer clubs and we're really excited now that we have different times and places that we can, we can utilize that with the new parts of the building. But also really kind of trying to figure out what students wants to participate and be a part of. That's really important for us. So in this upcoming school year. I know we are both going to be looking at more student voice and coming up with ideas that they might have, and even maybe having them lead some of the clubs as. Staff members are behind the scenes kind of as supervisors and just helping them have a. Safe split, space for them to participate. And we're looking at that data all the time for enrollment. We try to cap certain clubs. Some teachers have been very gracious in allowing more students as they're really excited about being in different clubs. And we also took away. The, the inability for students to do multiple clubs. It used to be that they could do one. And now if students want to do other clubs that fall on different days and times, we allow students to do, to do those as well.
Have the best partner. He's like talking to both of us. This is so great. All, just all of our same information. So for like, I think I'll, I can bring some of the cave four lens to club enrollment data and then also clubs and fee-based activities. I think. You know, now that we've come out of COVID, we have, last year we sent a sheet, a Google form to students to say, what do you want to see? Right? And then, you know, teachers came to us and said, gosh, I'd love to do a club, but like, what do you know, do you have some ideas? We could say, oh, sure, slime club. That was a big hit. That was. You know, brought back last year, an idea from a student. And then the student-led clubs was something that we took away from a conference that we went to. This past summer as well. So we're looking forward to getting those back up and running. Also our partnership with Northlight. Drama is something that we're both really passionate about and wanting to bring here more to Fairview. We don't have enough time in the day. We have. Teachers here who are very talented and would love to do something like that, but that's an opportunity for students after school that we feel is really important. We've heard chess club is also popular. So we're trying to balance, you know, if there's potential and families are willing or able to pay. And then also. The, of course, the free options during the school day, we feel really important as well. Objective five D, the collect SCL student data, that's complete. And then mindfulness practice. So our SEL team, this is something that they are wonderful at. They're the experts in our building. Each year they set up, Mr. Fair mentioned our wellness week. And so our, our lounge turns into really like this beautiful. This cucumber water and these lit palm trees, the lights are off. And teachers have said, can we make this like this in here every day? I mean, it really does like just. It's calm. It just creates like such a great energy. And so teachers have implemented this in their classrooms, for example. After recess, when energy is really high and they just need that time to calm down. They've. Implemented the mindfulness coloring, the lights off there. You know, there's background music that's really soothing, the sound of the ocean. We don't want to take too much instructional time away, but we do feel like when our kids are, you know, reset, then their brains are ready to go and their emotions are regulated. So that has been something that the majority of our teachers have implemented in their classrooms.
Excellent. Mrs. Gross is next for goal six, student support services.
Hi there. We are very pleased that the objectives and goal six have been completed. And we are even more excited to expand this. To include welcoming to NTDSC classrooms this fall to Fairview. One of these classrooms will be servicing students in kindergarten and first grade. And the second classroom will be second and third grade students. These students will be provided with highly structured instruction that they need while having opportunities to be with general education students as well. Some of these students are district 72 students, while some are residing in districts of our neighboring districts in our township. So we're very excited to welcome our new students into the Fairview community.
Thank you. Okay. Jeff, Jeff is going to wrap up the presentation with. Other major projects, just because we don't have really another way of saying it, but you know, the strategic plan was created five years ago and. A lot of things happen over the course of time that we must attend to and address. So Jeff is going to provide an overview. Of all the other things that we felt were important enough to bring to your attention this evening.
I think it was funny that we got together as a group and went over, you know. Everything going on over the next year and what we have on, you know, going forward. We all kept listing things and I think we all collectively got overwhelmed, but then it's nice to look around the table, knowing that we've been together for so long now that. It's, it's not that daunting because we all have ideas that continually get generated and we're all buying the, you know, we're all pulling on the, the same rope. So. It's a lot of stuff, but I think it's all stuff that we're excited about. So the construction completion, obviously you saw tonight, I mean, we. I mean, I can personally, can I speak personally? I cannot be more excited for it just to be over, really. I, this, it started like the first conversation about financing the project was happening, it happened the Friday before COVID. So it's been over, it's been three and a half years of talking about it. I just can't wait for the building to be done. I know everyone feels the same way, but I just have to get that, get that out there. The reading curriculum review over the winter in 23 and 24, I know it's something that Ms. Larkin is, is looking forward to the district learning team for the reading adoption. Preschool development, which Ms. Gross is going to be heading up, and we've already had substantial conversations about everything regarding preschool development and opening in the fall of 24. The school wave, the school-wide behavior expectations relaunch. I know Mr. LaPac is heading up that. The creation of the new certified positions, the advanced learning position with Ms. Hannan and the student success coordinator with Mr. Masterton coming in. Innovation with Ms. Che and then the electives being headed up by Ms. Strout. So a lot of exciting stuff going on those levels. The second year of our district equity learning team with, in being helped out again by Dr. Dubiel. Professional development will happen with our new math program. Again, our largest, our largest curriculum adoption we've had as a district. And we're helping that along with a lot of professional development investment. We will begin teacher contract negotiations this fall. The teacher's contract is up June 30 of 24. So we'll look forward to that. And then two things at the bottom there related directly to myself. A bit about the ability plan that Cassian heading up with our. Hope post-construction will take a little bit of a breather. And then something we've also been talking about for a while. At the district level is having a, a semi-annual, five-year financial operations project where we present to the board on a semi-annual basis. Things going on financially and, and, and with operations, because right now we come to you and present, you know, budget levy, that kind of stuff, but. Maybe a semi-annual update about here, here's what's going on with the building, here's, here's what's going on, the finances. And trying to find a good way to communicate that to both the board and the community.
Thank you. So we'll open it up to questions from the board about any of, of the different goals that we've been working on, any of the other things that are kind of coming into play. Over the course of the next year, anything that we can provide more information on, we're happy to do so.
I'll just personally add that the, the adding of the implementation of the electives in grades five through eight. I think that was a great idea. There's a lot of excitement amongst the children, you know, to have choice in what they take. And I, and I. Really commend the group for putting that together.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited about it too. You know, one thing I will mention is in a small district, you have the same people kind of doing all of the. Different jobs. And so when we're talking about committees, a lot of our teachers are on multiple committees. The administrative staff, we spread ourselves out as much as we can, but many of us are. Facilitating or leading committees as well. And so part of what I tried to do as the superintendent is balance out. How aggressively we can continue to push forward on all these different fronts without burning out our, our people doing all the important work. And so, you know, earlier on, when I talked about embarking on a strategic planning process in the winter of 2024. I think that, you know, what's behind that is that I think we all need a little bit of a breath. Because everybody is working really hard. And, you know, this is work that takes a lot of thought and time. The process is really important to us. And so, you know, in listening to our teachers, you know, the thought of implementing math program kindergarten through eighth grade and potentially a reading curriculum in the next year or two. That's really important and it's a lot of work. And so we just have to be really sensitive about how hard we're pushing because. Like I said, when you're a small district, everybody wears a lot of different hats and we don't want to burn anybody out. So. That's part of the rationale behind, you know, my recommendation on that. And like I said, we can continue to talk about it. It's not something we need to decide this evening. But I think we just always have to be sensitive about how much we're asking, you know, our staff are working full teaching loads. Every single one of them, all of this other work is beyond that. Whether it's on Mondays or institute days or working over the summer, you know, and for that we are really, really grateful. And so keeping that balance so that they can still have their personal lives, enjoy their families and their dogs and vacationing and all of that. And keep them rejuvenated too. So. So thank you for your patience in extending this plan originally. We needed the extra time. And for your consideration of kind of how we take those next steps. So we're excited for the year ahead. It'd be great to, to wrap up some of these initiatives. We're all really excited about that and just looking forward to the future. So. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the superintendent's report from August. I was thinking about trying to be humorous with this and just put construction, just one word. Because that feels like a lot of what my days have been filled with, which is wonderful, but then there are also all the regular job responsibilities that we all have. So I'll just highlight a few. I'm sure Mr. Kabore will talk about it a little later during the Ed Red portion of the meeting. That we got to go to a legislative breakfast, which was, you know, educational, but really, you know, good experience, spent time with colleagues and, and some of our local. Legislators, which is always interesting. As Sylvia mentioned, we met with the PTA to talk about dates and expectations and new ideas going forward, which is really. A good thing to do at this time of year. I have to hold consultation meetings with private schools here within our school district boundaries. Because the private schools are able to tap into some of our grant funding. And so we have to have meetings to talk about. How much money they're entitled to, how they like to spend it and, and kind of all the parameters. But we, we are the ones responsible for submitting the grant proposal as well as seeing it through. And making sure that it's attended to properly. So that goes on this time of year, the budget development, you know, Jeff and I work on together. Trying to keep the community updated about construction and answering questions as they come along. The plan for moving back into the classrooms was something that we had to think through pretty carefully and. We have to be fairly nimble with that because things are changing on a daily basis. So, you know, that's a challenge as well. We are happy that all of our certified staff members for the year are hired, part-time and full-time, which is a, a win for us. We have a couple of. Support personnel positions, not too many. So we're in a really good place as far as that goes as well. We are excited about the addition of our two NTDSE classrooms and. You know, it's just, there's a lot of conversation that needs to take place around those classrooms because. Those students will be spending time within their general education peers' classrooms. And so. You know, we're going to need to prepare our teachers for that, but also our students to understand that there are students with, you know, different challenges and. Different strengths and that we all welcome every single one of them. So that's been, you know, something that we've focused on a lot over the summer. And then the last one, I won't overdo, but many, I, I have to give a public thank you to Lincolnwood 74, Dr. Russo, who stored our buses for us all summer. They are back, which we're happy to have the buses back on site, but we had nowhere for them to go. So we're very grateful that they made space for us. And kept our buses safe. I think it's a sure sign to all the parents in the community when the buses roll back up in front of the school, like, okay, we're really doing this or really going to be back in school. But the construction logistics and the cleaning that's gone on with our nighttime cleaning crew, making sure that they had work to do. You know, it's just, it's, it's been a lot of sort of managing all those moving pieces. So. So that's my report. I'm happy to answer questions, discuss anything that sounds interesting to you. That I can expand upon. That's, that's pretty much what I've got. That I can expand upon. That's, that's pretty much what I've got.
All right, thank you Cindy. Next item is our board committees and representative Raphael. Any updates on the Ed Red?
Yeah, so this was my first committee meeting and I gotta say, I think I got spoiled. Cause it was, it was a legislative breakfast as Dr. Whitaker just mentioned, and it was, they had a great spread. I mean, they had bagels, lox. It was like Vegas buffet. This thing was legit. And it was, it was a, it was a great meeting. It was, we got to network with, you know, other board members from other districts, other superintendents, as Dr. Whitaker said, she saw a lot of colleagues, she like knew everybody there. I'm trying to meet everyone, legislators as well. So, you know, people from the General Assembly, House Representatives, senators were there. And it was just, you know, got to sit at a table and be able to discuss different topics. And really see how the state, the, the, the idea was to see how the state can support the school districts in, you know, legislation that's, you know, coming down or what, what they can consider. So we had, I'm gonna murder his last name, but it was Senator Rahm.
Villa Valam.
Villa Valam, him, he sat at our table. He did show up a little late. But, but it was great. His cheapest staff was there. So some of the topics we discussed was staffing shortages. You know, state mandates that are coming down, social emotional learning, the new arrivals of students across, you know, the state. School finance and school safety. So, you know, we all got to really just sit around and talk about these different topics and then discuss it as, as a group in general. Great feedback from all, from different board members, great feedback from the legislators. It was overall, it was a great meeting. So I really enjoyed it. Anything to add?
No, absolutely. I agree. Just really nice to have these conversations with our legislators and just let them hear what we're thinking, what board members are thinking about. Yeah, so thank you for going and spending your time. I think that, that initial breakfast was like to draw everybody in and get us to come back again. No, I've never seen anything like that. So we'll see.
And the building too. I don't know if anyone's been to District Twenty One, that new building they just built, that thing is amazing.
Yeah, they have a beautiful new facility. So it's sort of a glimpse, Archon is the architect for that project as well. So it was interesting, you know, going into the bathroom like, oh, that looks like our countertop. So a lot of the finishes were similar to what yours are gonna be. But yeah, beautiful. They did a great job there.
Thank you. NTDSE, Jack gave, were you able to attend the last meeting?
Yes, so I was able to attend the June meeting where they really kind of recap the past year. And I was able to meet board members from all the districts of two nineteen, which is great. It was nice to hear kind of their successes of the past year. July was a break. And then I was also able to attend August meeting, which was almost looking to the next year and hearing what the plan is. Also Esther and I did an orientation with Taryn and it was very informative. I think we learned a lot of what's, you know, the relationship with NTDSE and seeing and understanding everything that they do. They are also in construction and have an extended summer, so they are planning to return back September sixth, which is the day after us. So kind of in a similar situation there. Anything you want to add? I, I also mentioned that this was thrown out, they, there's a new restaurant in downtown Skokie called Will's Place. I don't know if this was mentioned before. It's run by adults that all have disabilities. So I think it's great, it would be great if, you know, our community to support them and show up and and pay a visit. So.
Yep. Thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
Do you know if they've opened yet?
Yes, I understand.
And it's very good. And, and the, everybody there is, is wonderful. So yes, please support it if you can, because it's, it's really a nice place.
Thank you for going to the orientation and taking a walk around the facilities there. I would encourage you to go back when there are students present because it really comes to life in a whole different way. And I think, you know, just having an understanding and appreciation of the types of students that they have, you know, it would definitely be worth a trip. I'd be happy to go with, and I know Taryn would welcome that as well.
Yeah, so we didn't tour yet there since they're under construction. She said, let's plan for October, November. We'll plan a tour of the Malloy Center, yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks for doing that.
Sure.
All right, regarding Freedom of Information Act request, I can report that there was one Freedom of Information Act received. And since the last board meeting, and it was handled as required. Any information items or correspondence?
No, we did not have any.
At this time, I'd like to invite members of the audience to address the board in public comment. If you wish to address the board, please come to the microphone, state your name. A three-minute timer will be set. The board secretary will keep the time. Yeah, okay. And I can also report that there were no online comments as well. All right, we are moving on to action items. We have a couple here. Can I have a motion in a second? One second. Sorry. Motion in a second too. We're gonna go to the first one. Adopt the tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-four district budget. Adapt a resolution placing the tentative budget on public display and set the date for a public hearing on the budget.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Fair will provide us with an overview of the tentative budget. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. This is our yearly presentation of the tentative budget before the final budget is adopted in September. In the board packet this month, there was a summer, there was a tentative budget summary. This is going to be breaking that down even further and just summarizing what was in the tentative budget summary. So the first slide that we're looking at here is simply an operating fund summary. So when I talk about operating funds, we're simply talking about the education, operations, maintenance and the transportation funds. Those are the three funds in which we spend and receive the most money. We're looking this year at a seven point nine percent increase in revenues. Number of factors related to this include the CPI increase and the, and we're getting tax money is going up to five percent this year. There are also some other factors at play, including state and federal revenues. We're waiting until the final budget to accurately project those that may, we try and find a delta of about one percent from tentative to final with all of these numbers. So keep that in mind, we find, get to the final. We try and change it as little as possible, but there are some things that are still fluid. There's a five point eight percent increase in expenditures, along with six point three million dollars in transfers. These six point three million dollars in transfers are those monies that were pledged for the construction project out of our operating funds. Which leaves us at a five point four million dollar operating deficit. However, because most of that is due to the construction project, take that money out and we're looking at a surplus. We're still finalizing hiring and insurance to enroll it for fiscal year twenty-four. As we hire employees, they're enrolling insurance and they have until the insurance starts on September first for new employees. This year, we're seeing a huge decrease in unfortunately in our CPPRT, which is a corporate replacement tax. Back in the late seventies, early eighties, personal property for businesses was taxed. They took that away. They then added on money to districts and to taxing bodies to account for that missing tax taxation. We get a huge portion of that because we have so much commercial property in the district. So we had two point eight million dollars in CPPRT money last year. That's going down to two million this year. We're trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out right now if that's gonna be long-term or just a one-year change. But it does make up about twelve percent of our operating fund revenue. Our CPI increases will help, but also it shows limitations of the property tax extension limitation. So we had about a seven percent increase in CPI last year. So we're having contracts go up because companies are trying to cover their costs, but we're only able, able to access five percent. Because of that law, we can't tax above five percent for our operating funds. So even if inflation is going up that much, we can only access up to five percent. So we're projecting, like I mentioned before, about a sixty-three point four percent fund balance at the end of FY twenty-four. And our tax rate is still significantly lower than others because of our commercial tax base at second among the twenty-nine North Creek elementary districts. There's a number of factors influencing the budget. I'll touch on some of these right now. Again, I mentioned earlier the delayed tax payments. That's a cash flow issue, not a budget issue. But because of those delayed payments from the assessor's office, we won't be getting our first tax payment till November. That CPPRT decrease I referenced, interest earnings, we're monitoring those because our fund balances are going down and the interest earnings are earned off of those fund balances. I expect that money to go down as well. Expecting fees to continue to, our student fees in federal and the lunch money to continue to go up as we become, as we're slowly moving back away from that point in which we're not having, we're getting federal lunch money during COVID. Now we're coming back to actually having lunch money. State funding is, we're accessing more state funds and trying to access more state funds as much as we can. A decrease in federal funding because we did spend everything, but I believe fifty thousand dollars with the S R money. We got a million dollars for S R three, and because of that, we were able to purchase last, the curriculum adoption for math in last year's budget. So that is a huge expense that's not on our books for twenty-four. We were able to get into twenty-three. We didn't actually receive that money in twenty-three, I don't think. So we're checking, we're monitoring that to see if we're gonna get that in this year, but that federal funding is going down. The three point nine percent increase in salaries is due to hiring and also contractual increases. We've talked a bit before at the board level about the increase in benefits. Benefits change eight point four percent increases based again off enrollment and the increase, significant increases we're seeing there are PPO plans and HMO plans. And I'll be continually updating the board throughout the next year about any changes we see coming in for the next, next year. So maybe we're hoping when we, when we're looking at trends with related to health insurance, that those trends are coming down a little bit. We're looking at the debt payments. So again, for our bonds, our debt certificates are part of our construction funding. We're paying those out of our operations maintenance fund, not out of our debt service fund. We're transferring money from operations maintenance to debt service. And then again, the NTDSE building we're paying for, which is about seventy-nine thousand dollars. Building construction project, I'll touch on that in a second. The curriculum adoption again was in last year. That helps our expenditures for this year. A decrease in technology. Do I have to mention that you stayed under budget? I'll do it at the board level. There we go. Patrick, good job. Specialized, that's, that's a huge cost for us. We're at about one point two million dollars for NTDSE costs last year. That's both in district that are serviced by NTDSE and out of district. That's a huge cost. Our current vendor contracts, and again, we're still in that third year of our bus fleet renewal of our leasing plan. It's another huge cost. There's a look at our operating funds history. The blue is, the blue is revenue, red is expenditures. The last one on the right is FY twenty-four. That green line is our projected fund balance. So you can see for a long time, we're hovering above those revenue expenditures. That represents a hundred percent of what we're spending and receiving. And then FY twenty-four, we're going down about that sixty percent level. There's just the education fund. A lot of the same, most of our revenues and expenditures are in that education fund. If you look back, out of operating funds, sixteen point four in revenue and operating funds, fourteen of that is education. There's a look at operations and fund. The big difference between the revenue and expenditures here, again, is to account for that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year payment that we're making from our operations and maintenance fund to cover those debt certificates for the construction project. So you'll notice there we're at about three hundred and ninety thousand surplus in FY twenty-four. That's to account for that money and we'll transfer that at a later date to make those payments. I know someone, who was it that asked me tonight about, Ms. Bouje, asked me tonight about the construction, the construction budget. This is what we're looking at right now and how, what we have to date. You'll see there's different categories there. Construction was the twenty-two million dollar number originally. We've had some change orders come in. Especially after the framing and drywall contractor and then also the track and that we had not planned initially. So it's gone to twenty-two six. Then we have architectural services, technology, furniture, and then soft costs such as engineering and other things that we're paying for that aren't, that aren't captured in those first four categories. Twenty-six million dollar total budget, sixteen point nine paid to date. We're expecting nine million of that, hopefully all to be paid in this next fiscal year. And then you'll see the fiscal year summary at the bottom with the payments for each one of those fiscal years with regards to construction that we've made so far. The next steps, we'll have a tentative budget on display. We'll have the final budget hearing in September. Whenever we get the audit report in, we're gonna have a projections report along with that. That's a good time to have those two coincide when we get the final audited numbers for this year. Attended levy for November and a final levy for December. Again, we're looking at about a six percent increase in our levy for next year. And based off of last December's CPI. And then January first, we'll begin the FY twenty-five budget process. And I encourage any board members to reach out to me. If you have any questions about the budget process, if first I'm going through it, ask me any questions that you can. I'd be more than happy to walk you through anything. And just about everything that goes into it and certain details and nuances of the budget that may not be easily understood. It's, it's very, it's as you, the fund accounting nature of it is very complicated. So there's a lot of restrictions that we have, that we have to abide by. So please let me know.
Anyone have any questions? All right, will the board secretary please call roll call vote?
Yes, Diana Diakakis.
Yes.
Sargon Guliana.
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor.
Yes.
Saji Philip.
Yes.
Christine Soika.
Yes.
Esther Tomuta.
Yes. Great. Can I have a motion in a second to approve employment of personnel?
So move.
I'll second. This would be for the part-time art teacher position and the part-time nurse position, which we discussed previously.
Anyone have questions? All right, will the board secretary please call a roll call vote?
Yes. Diana Diakakis.
Yes.
Sargon Guliana.
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor.
Yes.
Saji Philip.
Yes.
Christine Soika, yes. Esther Tomuta, yes.
Okay, perfect. Can I have a motion in a second to approve of release of closed session minutes for the dates of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
They're all twenty twenty-three, yes.
Move two for me. Yeah, we did, yes. I take that back. May seventeen, twenty twenty-three, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Right, the board had two meetings in May. One was a regular board meeting, closed session. And the second was the board training that was held in closed session of the school board association.
Will the board secretary please call a roll call vote?
Do you need the move, the motion?
Okay.
Sorry, Diana Diakakis. Sargon Guliana.
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor.
Yes.
Saji Philip.
Yes.
Christine Soika.
Yes.
Esther Tomuta.
Yes. All right, can I have a motion in a second to approve resignation of an educational support personnel?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Will the board secretary please call a roll call vote?
Yes. Diana Diakakis.
Yes.
Sargon Guliana.
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor.
Yes.
Saji Philip.
Yes.
Christine Soika.
Yes.
Esther Tomuta.
Yes. All right, last one. May I have a motion in a second to adopt resolution abating working cash fund to operations and maintenance capital project fund? Well, the
Second.
Did someone make a motion? Great. Jeff, could you offer a brief explanation?
Sure. So we're, we have one point four million dollars of working cash currently. This is the transfer one million of that to account for the construction project. This was planned previously. We're not transferring more than one million at this time because we're required by statute to have point zero five percent of our EAV in that fund, which accounts for about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So we're leaving a little bit of a buffer in there. But so we're gonna move one million dollars over right now. And then next month, we'll be able to plan transfer for, to account for a larger chunk. But right now, one million from working cash to operations and maintenance capital projects.
Will the board secretary please call roll call vote?
Sargon Guliana.
Yes.
Diana Diakakis.
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor.
Yes.
Saji Philip.
Yes.
Christine Soika.
Yes.
Esther Tomuta.
Yes. All right, moving on to items for future consideration. Does anyone have items for future consideration that they want to share? Okay, I would like to add one. I would like to set a public hearing at our next school board meeting on Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three to discuss the proposed transfer of five point six million dollars from the education fund to the operations and maintenance fund to, sorry, fund, fund the construction project.
No, thank you for that. This is procedural and we'll discuss it during that public hearing. It will be published, et cetera. This is all according to the statutes that we have to abide by. So nothing out of the ordinary there.
All right, well then, if I can have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting of Fairview Board of Education at eight thirteen PM.
So move.
I'll second.
Will the board secretary please call roll call vote?
Diana Diakakis.
Yes.
Sargon Guliana.
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor.
Yes.
Saji Philip.
Yes.
Christine Soika.
Yes.
Esther Tomuta, yes.
Great, thank you.